Good to see you.
Yeah, it's good. It's been awhile. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to Santaquin City Planning Commission Meeting on Tuesday, May 11th. Would anyone like to get us started tonight with an inspirational thought or an invocation?
I'll be glad to if you'd like. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet as the Planning Commission. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy in this country of ours and pray that we might as citizens do everything that we can to preserve and protect those freedoms. We ask thee to watch over our families in our absence and we give thee thanks for all that we enjoy. And we offer this prayer in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Very good. Thank you very much. Would anyone like to leave us in the pledge tonight?
I'll do it. Please stand.
Just repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. So before we get started tonight, I just wanted to extend a welcome to our new Planning Commissioner, Commissioner Jorgensen. Thanks for being willing to serve the city and hang out with us on Tuesdays. I also want to say thanks to Commissioner Sperry who has left to open up a space for Commissioner Jorgensen. She was on the Planning Commission for several years, five or six years, and we appreciate her service during that time. So we wish her well and whatever comes next. Alright, tonight on the agenda, we're gonna start with a public forum. Then we've got two concept plans which both have public hearings. And after that, we'll wrap up with other business which includes the approval of the minutes from our last meeting. I'm just gonna plow ahead in that order unless anyone's got a good reason to change it up. Okay, let's get to it then. So let's order, uh, let's open the public forum tonight at 7:05. Did we have any comments submitted for the public forum?
Uh, we have comments, but I think they're all geared more towards the two public hearings.
Okay, and can we suss out which ones go with which public hearing? Okay, great. Is there anyone in the room that would like to offer any comments during the public forum? Okay, so we will then go ahead and close the public forum at 7:05. And we'll move right into Agenda Item 1. This is the concept plan on the Stratton Acres proposal. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes. Make sure I'm getting the right screen shared. Alright, Commissioners Curtis and Nixon, can you see that? Okay, I think I, I think I saw her mouth yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is a proposed development. Uh, it's called Stratton Acres. Uh, it is basically just north of Baffal Valley Elementary, uh, along 300, um, west. Let's see, approximately Royal Land Drive and 200 east. I apologize. Um, this, this property is located in the R10 zone and the proposal is for 36 single-family lots. Uh, it's a standard subdivision, so all the lots are proposed to be, uh, the, the minimum, uh, square footage of 10,000 square feet or more. Uh, the total acreage of the property is 12.39 acres. Um, because this is a standard subdivision, there's, there's not any amenities. You do have, uh, some retention basins and ponds that will help with storm drainage that, um, you can talk about in a bit in, in terms of trying to, to utilize those to the, their, their, uh, full potential. So this is, this is a concept plan. Um, so this is the first look that the Planning Commission has at it. It's the first look the, the public has at it. A DRC has, has looked at it. During the concept, there's no action taken. There's just feedback and, um, you know, questions asked for the developers so that they can take that and start working on, on a preliminary plan. The preliminary plan is gonna have a lot more information, a lot more engineering that will, will, uh, give us a lot more detail to understand more of how the development's gonna work and what it looks like. So for tonight's purposes, it's going to be looking at the general layout of what they proposed and, um, and giving them feedback so that they can, can use that to, to start working on their preliminary plan. So trying to get the app up, screens kinda slow scrolling. Oh, yes. I apologize. Colton. Yeah, so I apologize. We've got a couple, uh, people who are, are, I believe are engineers for the developer. We have Eric Simonson in the room who is, is the applicant. Um, and I don't really have anything else in, in terms of, of the, the general introduction. I don't know if, if, uh, Mr. Simonson has anything to say. Um, but I'll look to you for any questions that you might have for, for me or for the applicant or, or maybe you're ready for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's give the applicant a chance to add to that if you would like to. Mr. Simonson, did you have anything you wanted to say?
You know, first of all, it's been a long time seeing people in person. So it's nice to get out and get, get face-to-face with people again. Um, Kim Stratton, I, I know his name is gone, is, is deep in Santaquins history, the Stratton family. Uh, he's a great, great guy, great farmer. Um, I connected with Kim years and years ago and most recently, um, he, he asked me to help him with moving some of his land into a, into a different phase than what it is. Um, he spent a lot of time with Nevo School District, um, one of the big land sellers to Nevo for the future schools of the middle school and the high school down the road. Um, and when Kim first reached out to me, he, he identified this piece as, as a proponent because obviously development is moving that direction. And one of the things that I really appreciated with what Kim did is, you know, he looked at the current zoning, um, the R10 zone and, and really thought, hey, you know what? This is, this is a chance to, to put together a development where people have a little bit more land than, than the, than the other current developments out there and a place that they can go ahead and, and, you know, enjoy farm, stuff like that. But, um, we, we feel like this is a great use, great layout. It meets, um, Santaquins' current zoning and, uh, really look forward to working with all of you guys. Any questions for me?
Very good. Um, we may, we probably will have some questions for you. Um, let's go ahead and do the public hearing and then, yeah, if we have questions for you, we'll come back. Alright, thank you. Thank you for that. So, uh, we do have a public hearing. Let's go ahead and open that public hearing at 7:10. I believe you said we had some comments.
Yep, we do. We have a couple, couple for this one. Alright, so, um, the first one says, "I'm writing this email with great concern regarding our city becoming another casualty to greed in the form of mass housing and commercial development. Sadly, I watched as agricultural small-town communities gave way to mass housing and commercial development. Friends, South Jordan Riverton Bluff Dell and Harriman, close friends. This was my home and the home of where I raised my children. We were a community where we relished with knowing our neighbors, taking pride in our town and way, way of life. Unfortunately, where the fields of hay, roaming cows and horses stayed, now only sport roads or never-ending rooftops with no end in sight. We quickly grew tired of living this way. That is one of the main reasons we moved here. We loved living in a small town. I'm not naive to the need of growth and housing for our children. However, it can grow tastefully and with careful planning. We need agriculture for our children, open spaces, parks and recreation. We strongly need to preserve this way of life. If we don't, then who will? Santaquins can still profit and thrive with this way of life. We can be unique. Why not become a town where school buses come on field trips to experience the beauty of agriculture? We need it to survive. We can offer a place where, where busy city people come to get away from the hustle and bustle. Experience homegrown ma-and-pa restaurants and gift shops, a weekend stay at a bed and breakfast, a place for artists and artisans to thrive and a place for special events. There's a large population of people who are longing to start hobby farms, regrow neglected orchards, plant vineyards and reconnect with the land. Stratton's property would be perfect for this. Please give us a chance to preserve this way of life and the opportunity to pass it on to our children. Furthermore, our town does not have the infrastructure to support mass growth. We have one freeway exit on the north end of town that supports Santaquin residents as well as the residences from Genoa, Goshen, Alberta and outlying small towns. Main Street is a two-lane road overburdened with heavy traffic. We already need a light at the corner of Main and Center Street. It takes years and a whole lot of money to grow infrastructure to support mass growth. We are not Harriman, Lehigh or any other overgrown city. We are Santaquin. Please consider the way we grow our beautiful city. Sincerely, Mary Ann Laritzen, Riley and Sadie Hoofs."
Thank you for those comments.
The next comment is, says, "I just have a question I hope can be addressed in tonight's hearing regarding the sixty, sorry, the 36 lot residential proposal from Eric Simonson. If it wasn't already going to be talked about, will or can there be in the plans a fence along the back of the houses facing away from those along 120 east and the townhouses on 990 north? I have attached a picture showing where I'd like to see the fence as I live in 990 north. Thank you for consider, your consideration. Thomas Galloway." I don't know if people can see that. Um, but he's basically outlined a line that is, is along here, the, the backs, basically the, the back, the east property line of those existing homes. And those are the public comments we have for that one.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, there's no members of the public here, uh, in the room with us, so, uh, we'll take that as the, um, extended, the public comment on this one and close the public hearing at 7:14. Um, and thank you to everyone for submitting those comments. Um, I mean, maybe we can just take a little bit of time to address that, some of those comments. Um, as far as a fence behind those houses on 120 east, um, you know, it's certainly possible to make that request, but I don't think there's anything in the code that would require the developer to do that. Um, and so, um, I, you know, we understand the concern with existing homeowners who live there and would like to see a fence, but there would be nothing that we could do to enforce that. Um, and in terms of the, uh, comments that were submitted in the first comment, um, I think that's something that we're all very sensitive to. I mean, certainly the city's been doing a lot of work on the general plan update and the, um, agrotourism efforts and the Harvest View 242, um, efforts, um, and the study that was just done by the students at USU. And so those are all concerns that we all share and certainly something that we're, um, looking at. Um, that said, we don't necessarily have the power to say that any particular area of town should be, um, set aside for any particular use along those lines, right? I mean, we're looking to future planning, but right now this area is in an R10 zone and we've got a property owner who wants to develop their property. And so there would be nothing that we could do to stop that, um, other than voice those concerns. I mean, that was something that stood out to me as well, seeing the orchard that's there, um, that's gonna go away. And, and like I said, that's something that we have been talking about and something we're concerned about. But again, you know, we can't tell a property owner who wants to develop that property that they can't do that as long as they are meeting the, the requirements that are set out in the current code. Anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge those comments and say that those are things that we are thinking about as well. Um, is there any thoughts or concerns or questions for the applicant?
Um, have we had any response from the Taylors at all, which are gonna be quite impacted from all this is going on, especially those retention ponds? And is there any, um, consideration for those retention ponds being overly inundated? I remember a flood that we had back in about 2010 and we had knee-deep water in the church parking lot at 545 north.
Could you, um, explain for us where the Taylors are located?
The Taylors are located just north of 990 north, the, the, the most north retention pond on the east side and, and three lots.
So this house that's existing here, behind the, um, townhouses there? Are you looking at this?
No, according to me, it's on, on your map, it's over on the right.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I've got mine oriented north.
Okay.
At the top.
Yeah, okay. I'm with you. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
This home right here that I'm gonna bring over? Art, is it this one right here?
Or Second East?
Second East is right here.
No, they're...
They probably are just off.
They're way back off of Second East. They're almost to 120.
Yeah, I think the Taylors are on the north west side.
Yeah, they're almost to 120 east.
And he has the, uh, corral out there where, where they store horses and keep horses. So I, I know Kim, uh, is very close with the Taylors. Uh, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any objections to this. The retention pond and our engineers can definitely chime into this, Paul Watson, but on the retention pond or multiple, uh, locations, I mean, those have been engineered for worst-case scenario and should suffice if, you know, there's enough storm drainage that comes out of there.
Are those ponds isolated in that they're only catching water from this area?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Those are only to service those 36 lots from Second East or from Royal down to Second East and, uh, um, to the, I can't remember, is that Ninth, Ninth North? I don't know. But yeah, yep, the 36 lots.
Do they have a dual purpose? Can they be used for anything else if they don't have water in them?
I think that's something that we, I should reflect to, to Jason on that.
Yeah, that, that was one of the comments in DRC was, was if, if there's a way to consolidate the retention ponds into one and perhaps, uh, landscaping in a way that it could be used, uh, for, you know, uh, just recreational purposes, just a grassy area to play or, or something like that. Uh, I know that's something that, that particularly Mayor Hansaker is always mentioning is, is it'd be great if we can find dual use for these retention ponds. So that was one of the suggestions that we gave them. Uh, and I apologize, I should've brought this up before, but the only, the only other thing that really the DRC had to say about this was, was some of the more of the, uh, engineering-related type issues. There's some, some, uh, utilities that, that, some, some challenges with utilities that they're gonna need to, to address in order to, to get sewer to flow, uh, the way that it needs to. So, uh, other than that, in terms of a, a layout standpoint, I mean, it gets, it doesn't get much more, uh, straightforward than, than this. It's, it's the, the minimum zoning requirements and it's a relatively simple layout, so.
How does the elevation here compare to our sewer treatment plant? Is it lower?
So it, it depends on the, the elevation of the lines. So right there is, is where you're getting some shallow lines, so it's a little bit harder to, to get sewer to flow where it needs to. It's gonna require some, some, uh, updates, uh, um, from, from the, the school district property and, and stuff like that in order to make it all work. So they're, they're very well aware of that and, and those, those concerns have been communicated to them and that's something they're gonna need to work on and address when they bring a preliminary black, a, a preliminary plan back to the city.
Good, thanks. It is refreshing to see single-family homes. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, you should thank Kim Stratton. It was, and I mean, to, to reflect on the other comment, I mean, Kim, I've, I've been around him a lot. Being a farmer's hard work. And I mean, this is something where over the years, he's accumulated, uh, accumulated a lot of land. And I mean, he's getting to the point where he's like, I can only work so hard, right? And these guys work their butts off. And I, I think what he came up with is a, is a perfect solution. So, thank you.
Yeah, Trevor, can I just make a comment regarding kind of one of those comments and just about this in general? I think, you know, as much as, you know, short of not building anything ever again, um, obviously which is not gonna happen, uh, we can't object to, you know, something as, as simple as this. I mean, this is what we would like to see compared to all the other stuff that's going in on the townhomes and multifamily that, you know, we're not necessarily in love with. Um, this is the type of thing that we would like to see. I mean, it fits in exactly with everything else right around it. It's normal subdivision. It's, you know, quarter acre lots, which is great and it's gonna go right next to a couple of schools. I mean, um, this is, this is what we'd like to see if we're gonna see growth at all versus what some of the other stuff that we've had to, um, allow. So, um, I think if we object to everything, then it just becomes noise and then when we really have a problem with something, we won't really be, our voices won't be heard.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. The R10 zone itself is very simple and this concept, you know, at a high level certainly fits within those constraints. Um, are there any trail corridors or anything to go through there along that school site? I think there's one more over on Center Street, right?
Correct.
So that would not impact this development. Okay. Well, last call, Commissioners, any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Well, then I think we can, uh, wrap up this agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Simonson.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, let's move on then to Agenda Item Number 2. This is the Scenic Ridge Estates Concept Plan and Public Hearing.
I think, um, and he just did that. Sorry, I, I think my computer's got so many things going on that the, the mouse is really hard to, to move around. It's kinda hopping around. Alright, so this, this is another, uh, approved subdivision called Scenic Ridge Estates. Uh, this is on the East Bench at approximately 430 South and, and 1200 East. Uh, this, this property is located in the R12 PUD zone. However, it needs to be understood that this is not a PUD proposal. This is just a, um, a piece of property that was part of a previous PUD but never was developed. Uh, and in fact, the development agreement for that, uh, is, has expired and so it doesn't apply here. So really, all the requirements and the, the standards that they're gonna be held to are the R12 zone. So with that, they are proposing, um, 17 single-family lots. Uh, the minimum size, uh, is 12,000 square feet and there's, there's a handful that are, um, a little bit more than that, uh, closer to, um, just over 13,000 square feet. Um, so the, the entire development is in the hillside overlay zone. Uh, so there's some requirements that, that will, will accompany, uh, that overlay in, in terms of, of preserving, um, you know, the sensitive lands that are up there. There's a number of things that are gonna need to be looked at and addressed with this, this particular site, uh, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of stormwater, uh, and a number of different things. Again, this is a concept plan, so, uh, this is the first look the Planning Commission's had at it, first look the community's had it. Uh, DRC has, has already reviewed it and, and has given a lot of feedback. Uh, we've, we've met with the applicants and, and, and made them well aware of, of a number of different, uh, things that need to be addressed in order for, uh, development, uh, to happen or for, for lots to, to be adequately serviced in, in that particular location. Um, so, yeah, with that, um, we are, are, are going to, to have the Planning Commission provide feedback and, and, uh, you know, give them, them questions that, that they'll need to, to look at closer and, and be able to work on and address in, in a preliminary plan. So I guess with that, uh, we have applicants. Uh, we've got, uh, Byron Bastian. Um, I know Joe Santos is on there. He's the engineer. They're all, um, participating via Zoom. So, uh, they're, they're for any questions you might have and, and, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions as well. So.
Okay, um, thank you. Let's go ahead and give the applicant a chance to add anything to that presentation if he would like to. Mr. Bastian?
This is Josh Call. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that introduction. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys for taking a look at this for us. Uh, as was explained, uh, we're looking at, uh, developing that. We've, we've gone through and we've, we've really tried to, uh, envision what this development would look like as we move forward. Uh, we see a lot of developments that come in and try to change up what's around them and they don't necessarily look like they fit. Um, this development seeks to, to meet that. It seeks to follow the code while still providing, you know, the lots that are at the size and, and for the most part, a lot of them are, are larger than the, the required minimum. You know, we're not looking to just cram as many lots in as we can and just get in and get out. We're really looking to put forward a development that, that looks good, that the community is gonna be proud of and that, uh, can be, you know, something that, that the city can be proud of.
Great, thank you. Okay, we do have a public hearing on the agenda, so let's go ahead and, um, do that public hearing. I'm gonna open it at 7:27. Did we have any comments submitted for this public hearing?
We do. Alright, so, uh, "To whom it may concern, I would like to express the extreme amount of concern that I have regarding the new Bastian Homes development. Mostly the amount of heavy equipment traffic that will create, that it will create on 130 South and 150 South in order to reach the 900 East Collector Road. The corner on 130 South that turns 90 degrees to 730 East is much too narrow. Every time a tractor-trailer goes around the corner, they drive across the sidewalk and need to go completely onto the, into the oncoming traffic lane to make the corner. This has resulted in numerous close calls and one accident. Also, the turn from 730 East onto 150 South is much too narrow. Uh, this is extremely unsafe and will only end in an accident with the construction traffic. We already have a serious speeding problem in the area that includes the few construction projects currently in the area. Very few stop at any of the stop signs. I recently watched as a truck pulling a trailer of wood flatwork forms narrowly missed hitting a neighbor's child that was standing on the corner. The wheel well of the trailer going less than a foot away from her. This area has been a problem since I moved to Santaquin. I understand the need for growth. I understand the city's desire to continue building and congest traffic in order to force the UDOT into fixing our freeway on, quote-unquote, fixing our freeway on and off ramps. I do not understand why it would be okay to put people in danger in order to, quote-unquote, "continue growth" in the area. The only safe way the Bastian and Pedersen developments can be safely done is to require the Collector Roads to be finished first. I know it's hard to think about growth and stuffing as much traffic as we can into gridlock while we have a pesky little thing like safety, safety to think about, but it is your civic duty to ensure that the, quote-unquote, "growth" is done as safe as possible. I don't really even dare to park on the road for fear of yet another of my cars getting hit. Thank you, Leroy Kinder."
Thank you.
The next public comment, "The proposal for the new East Bench subdivision posted did not provide adequate details. There should be information regarding fire safety, water, utilities, future trails, parks and needed roads that weren't addressed in what was provided to residents. We need more data regarding the impact of future East Bench i- infrastructure and development before any recommendation should go to the City Council from the Planning Commission. Respectfully, Hillary Fitzsimmons." The next comment, "To whom it concerns, as residents of the Upper East Bench in Santaquin, we have some concerns with the proposed development called Scenic Ridge. First, the water pressure in this area is already concerned and we have yet to see an extra tank created nearby. We've been told that adding 17 more homes could cut our water pressure in half. With residential properties being developed on every corner of Santaquin this year, we want to first see the necessary infrastructure to support such development. Second, the USU graduates did an amazing project in regards to Santaquin City's future growth. They included a whole section on utilizing our terrain to create walking and biking trails, views and outdoor recreation. We have yet to see any of this on the east side. Our neighborhood already lacks green space and so we use the mountain and create our own trails, none of which are paved. This new development will not only take away a significant part of our mountain space, but also blocks residents' access to what remains. Thank you for, thank you for your consideration, Dan and Heather Stevenson." The next comment, um, uh, "To be read aloud at Development Meeting on Tuesday, May 11th. Good evening. My name is Jessica Mitchell. Our family lives at the corner of Third South, about as high up the mountain as you can go. When we were purchasing our home in 2019, we investigated extensively regarding the development that would eventually be built above our house on the mountain. I also had personal conversations or email messages with Councilwoman Montoya, Mr. Ben Reeves, Councilman Nick Miller, Mr. John Lindell and Mr. Norm Beagley. Repeatedly, we have been told that a wa- a new water tank was needed before new homes could be built. Please see attached email screenshot from Mr. Reeves. Can you please tell us when and where that water tank will be located? Who will cover the cost of the water tank? How will further development impact the water pressure and availability to current residents? Additionally, in reviewing the, the current city plans and in light of previous discussions regarding this development, where is the Bonneville Shoreline Trail supposed to be located and when can we expect that to be built? Who will pay for it? When will the Peter Rabbit Springs Park be built? Who will pay for it? Is anything being done to preserve the channel of Peter Rabbit Springs? Where are the required debris basins going to be located? And do these future residents know that they will be along the mountain? When will those be built and who will find them? What are the plans for sewage in that area? Unless I am mistaken, at a previous meeting, it seemed that the new homes would not be able to tie in their utilities to existing infrastructure. Will they all be on septic tanks? What is the environmental impact of that? Has the fire mitigation plan been reviewed and may I have the city's assurance that when the fi- next fire occurs, I will be able to evacuate in a timely manner and that fire crews will be able to access the mountain around our neighborhood? Has the traffic pattern been evaluated and when will new roads and intersections be, uh, that can support this growth be built? Your answers are eagerly anticipated. Thank you for your time. Jessica Mitchell, Santaquin, Utah." The next comment, "Dear Planning Commissioner, City Council Members and City Officials," Dear Planning Commissioners, City Council members, and city officials, I would like to wholeheartedly endorse the public comment from Jessica Mitchell regarding the history of adequate infrastructure, particularly regarding water and fire safety on the East Bench. I too have heard from city officials going back at least a decade that improvements would be required from the developer at that time, two thousand and two, question mark, in order for future growth on the East Bench. Uh, I do not believe these improvements have occurred, but if they, if they had, could you please inform us of what they were and when and how they occurred? Please do not let the historical pattern of critical elements of infrastructure falling through the cracks when a new developer submits their plans. Thank you, Pamela Coulson. Those are the comments that we have for this public hearing.
Um, thank you very much and thank you everyone for submitting your comments. Um, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing at seven thirty-three. Um, so maybe we can take a moment to address some of those comments. Um, the first comment was regarding construction, construction traffic and safety. Um, obviously that's nothing that we have purview over here as the planning commission. Um, and I would encourage those residents to reach out to the Public Safety Department, um, who could better address that. But that said, um, maybe we can talk about how construction traffic gets routed up to those neighborhoods. Um, I believe I understand which corner that they were talking about and I can see how that would be a concern there. Um, but there are other ways up to that neighborhood where this, uh, development is going to be located, um, or is proposed to be located, I guess, um. I mean, the developers are on the line, um, certainly, and we're having a conversation with them. Is, is there a more suitable route that we could suggest that construction traffic take to get up there?
Yeah, I, I think it could be appropriate later in the process to, as this gets closer, closer, uh, if it gets closer to approval, that, that if there's a more appropriate, um, access or a trucking route, that we, we identify that and, and help guide any construction traffic there. That's always a tricky thing because subcontractors and stuff, they, they aren't going to be in these meetings. They're, they're hired, you know, way down the line if, if, uh, if development happens and in some cases, lots may not be immediately developed. It may be years before they're developed. So it's always a, 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 something that we're, we're, we recognize and I appreciate you mentioning that if there's concerns that way, uh, we, we ask that, that they contact the city and let this, let them know about us. If it's speeding, then the police department can, can watch it and, and, and be able to, to enforce that. If it's something else, then, then there's, there's channels for us to, to look at those types of things, traffic controls and, and whatnot to, to make it safer for, for the neighborhood that's experiencing, uh, construction in, in their area.
Right, okay, thank you.
Jason, would you mind pulling up a map of talking about that intersection or about, just do we wait till later term, or later time?
Sure, yeah, I can work on that.
Maybe while you're working on that, um, we can move on and we'll circle back to that. So, um, there was a comment about requiring more information and to that, I would just say that, um, we are extremely early in the process here. This is a concept review and so all we're really looking at is a very high-level overview of a potential proposal. Um, and that's why there's no additional detail. Um, another point to point out would be that this property is located in what's called a, uh, hillside overlay zone and that area has a number of additional requirements, um, outside of what would be required for just the R12 zone. And so th- this is just the beginning of an entire process that would address a lot of those concerns that were raised in some of those comments. And so, um, and that's why we're not seeing it now. Uh, it's just because we're not there yet and so, uh, that will happen as this moves forward. Um, so you've got a map, so let's, let's go ahead and.
Yeah, this might be tricky because I've got Zoom going. I've got a number of things. My, my, my mouse is really having a hard time moving and, and zooming in on things, but I think I can.
There are several ways to access that spot though.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the corner they were talking about was right there by Seasons of Santaquin, this tight corner. Um, and I can totally see the concern there, especially if you've got big trucks going around there, but, um, to that point, I mean, there is three hundred South and four hundred South that, um, have a more direct route to that area, I think. So, um, as Mr. Brown said, that's certainly something we'll keep in mind and that, uh, staff can raise with the developers as the process moves forward. Uh, Commissioner Curtis, did you have anything else you wanted to say about that?
No, I was just trying to get familiar with what the concern was in that comment. I see what you're referring to. Yeah, it seems like there's quite a bit of ways to get there.
Jason, can you put your pointer on the property, please?
Yeah, so it's going to be this area right here. And I, I apologize, earlier I talked about twelve thousand square foot lot minimum. That's the minimum lots and there's some that are, are in that range, but there, there are some, some larger lots that are over an acre that, that are on the southern portion of this property. So there's, there's actually quite a diversity of lot sizes, uh, to, to really pretty large lot sizes that we're, we're used, we're not used to seeing, so.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so, um, the final common thread in a lot of those comments in the public hearing was related to infrastructure and water pressure. Um, and so maybe I would just defer to staff on that. Is there anything you can say about those concerns at this point?
You know, I think, I think the, the best thing that we can say at this point is, is these are all wonderful questions and they're concerns that, that have been expressed by the DRC. Um, this is really going to come down to the developer needing to, to show that development can happen on this property, that they can meet our code. So the burden of that proof will be on them and their engineering to show that, that they can adequately address, uh, stormwater concerns, uh, that they can provide, uh, necessary infrastructure in order to, to, to provide, uh, sewer and water and those types of things. So again, this is, this is a concept plan. We haven't dove into that and I, I know the applicants have, have started to, but a lot more of that detail will be provided at the preliminary, preliminary plan and, um, at, at all three levels, DRC, Planning Commission, and City Council, they will be looking at and reviewing that to make sure that, that they, they do in fact meet code and, and, uh, and so that, that's the way that this will be looked at because this is an administrative process. It'll all be tied to whether or not they meet code and we'll be looking at their development and, and basing, um, you know, any sort of recommendations or approvals based on, on those, on their merits.
Right, um, and then maybe just a, a related question, as the process moves forward, um, and we look at, you know, what they propose to, uh, to mitigate these impacts or these risks that we're talking about, you know, infrastructure and things like that. If we find that, you know, as development is proceeding, that maybe it doesn't adequately address those concerns, is there a process to go back and reevaluate that and make sure, um, you know, that those issues are fixed, I guess?
Yeah, and I, and I think maybe the, the easiest way to put it is, is they just, you know, like I said, there's some significant things that need to be addressed and we appreciate the public, uh, making, you know, bringing this to light for the develop, for the developer and for the city, um, and, and expressing those concerns. So it, it's not necessarily going to be a matter of, of yes or no, but it's going to be a matter of, of, of how they can, can make it work or, or if they can make it work. So the way I see it is, I, I don't necessarily see, uh, DRC or Planning Commission or City Council, you know, not approving the development, but rather they're not going to make any traction and, and be able to move through the process until they can adequately address, uh, all of the, the infrastructure concerns that are there. So, um, that's what we'll be looking for. Uh, they've, they've, they, uh, you know, in the four years I've worked here, we've had dozens of people who've looked at this property and, and tried to make it work and it's, it's a challenging piece of property, but, uh, this is, this is the first official application that, that I've seen in the four years I've worked here and, um, and I, and I think they're, they're trying to make it work and, and take a shot at, at being able to make this development work for, for them and, um, be in compliance with city requirements.
Yeah, and I think the point is that throughout the process, they're going to be working hand in hand with the city engineer and staff to make sure that those concerns are addressed. So, um, hey, I think that hopefully covers most of the concerns that were raised in the comments from the public. Um, commissioners, any questions or concerns for, uh, staff or for the applicants?
Am I correct in thinking that this property is just immediately north of the LDS church that's there?
No, this is, this is higher up on the bench. This is further east than any homes that are up there. Um, so some people might be familiar with Peter Rabbit Springs. It's actually quite a bit south from there. Um, but if you were to look at a map, there's kind of a jagged line of, of homes that are up there with stub streets. It'd basically kind of be that puzzle piece that would, would fit in there and, and connect some of those roads and, and, um, kind of complete that, that area.
And there are currently trailheads. I can see where her concerns for access to the mountain, but those trailheads have kind of been pushed through time, so the trails would still be there, just the, the way to access it would be different.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a kind of a tricky question, uh, because there's a lot of, of trails that, that are being used up there that are on private property. And so, uh, that, that's something that we, we definitely have a concern for and value is, is maintaining access to the, the mountains, to the National Forest Service land. So, um, that's, that's something that being in a hillside overlay that, that they would need to, to maintain and provide for is, is some, some trail access. There's a channel right there that, that I know is, is going to be a, a major thing for this development. Uh, you know, those who were around back in, in the early two thousands, that fire and the debris flows that came from that, that channel was where all that debris flowed down. So there's going to be, uh, uh, that channel's going to be looked at closely to make sure that it can be adequate to handle any sort of, of future catastrophes. Uh, but it's expected that that channel could also be a good alignment for, for trail to, to go along that. Um, so there, there's still some property that's, uh, east of that channel that I know that they're, they're looking at, uh, maybe sometime in the future, but for now and for this particular proposal, it's, it's just the area that you can see on the map. So there's a number of things that they're, they're looking closely at and trying to make work and, and that, that's why we have a, a subdivision process, uh, is to, to thoroughly vet out all the different, um, uh, concerns and, and things that need to be addressed. So again, this is concept. This is the first beginning part of the process and, and, uh, yeah, we appreciate the feedback that's been given and, and the feedback that will continue to be given by the planning commission. So, uh, we'll, we'll wait to see, uh, what, what they, they do with, with all this information and see if they can, can make it work to, to give us a, a, a good preliminary plan.
Yeah, to that point though, I would say they did actually call out a trail in the proposal, right, along that, um, drainage channel. So clearly they're thinking about it and, um, I would just echo that. I was really happy to see that on there. Um, that's obviously something that we're, you know, we have a big concern about and that we're talking a lot about is, is trails and access and so very happy to see that on there.
Yeah, i- i- it is required of them because it's hillside.
Yeah.
Hillside overlay.
I'm glad you mentioned the runoff up there. We, in our previous agenda item, we were, we talked a little bit about that. This would be even a greater concern in this area.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we could, there's, there's a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes to, to, to address those concerns. As, as you know, we've talked about, uh, the, the millions of dollars that, that our, our staff, particularly Norm Beagle, who's been able to work with NRCS to, to get that funding so that we can work on, on building retention basins. And it, those, those exact locations haven't been, uh, worked out. There's still a lot of studies that need to be done to, to put them in the right location. So, uh, it's, it's trying to, to address all these, these factors, uh, at the same time and, and it'll be continued to be looked at and, and, uh, and we'll want to be thorough in, in how we do this so that, that we can, uh, protect and, and maintain what's, what's up there.
What about the issue of, uh, water tank or water pressure up there? Is there anything being?
Yep.
Talked about that?
It's, it's getting further up the, the hillside where that's, that's definitely going to be a concern. Again, this is, this, the burden of proof of, of showing that, that, uh, water pressure can be adequately addressed is going to be on the developer. So that's something we'll look to them to show us how they'll make that work and then we'll be able to review it and, and, uh, respond accordingly. But, um, you know, it's, it's always been told to, to people who've inquired about the property that there, there's some significant infrastructure improvements that need to be addressed in order for, uh, lots to be, uh, developed and, and for, uh, homes to be served. So a, a lot of unanswered questions and, and again, it's something that we'll be looking to the developer to, to see how they propose to, to meet our requirements and, and address all those concerns.
So one, one question I had got answered, um, personal A. It was a smaller lot size. It's only ten thousand square feet and not the twelve. So that's what they're reserving for the pump station. That's what they're hoping to preserve for the pump station, um, for the water issue.
Yeah, so there, there's, there's some infrastructure up there that they'll be providing and I, I go, I'm glad you, you pointed that out because that, that lot is below the, the minimum zoning requirements, but that's a lot that's anticipated to be dedicated to the city and, and, uh, be the location for, for necessary infrastructure improvements, uh, like a pump house. So, yeah, there, there are some things that they're, that they've, they've started to dive into, but again, um, we'll see all of that, that information as they flesh out a, a proposed preliminary plan.
Okay, and since they've been part of this meeting, they've heard the public hearing and what people are concerned about, um, whether they're addressing those issues already. It's now something that they can look to address and be part of their presentation and what they're going to officially have to present to all of us.
Yeah, and, and, and DRC has, has, uh, provided them a, a lot of red lines. These are, these questions and concerns are things that'll be added to those red lines as things that, that we're going to be looking for them being able to, to answer and address, uh, as they move forward through the subdivision process.
Okay, anything else, commissioners? Okay, um, well, if there's no other comments or questions, um, again, this is a concept review, so, uh, we don't have any action on this tonight, so we can move on then. Thank you, everyone. It was a good discussion and thank you to the applicants and their representatives for being here. Okay.
Yeah, thank you, planning commissioner for looking at that. We appreciate it.
Certainly, thanks. Alright, let's move on to agenda item three, other business. We need to look at the minutes from our last meeting on April twenty-seventh. Um, do we need to have any discussion about those minutes?
I'd like to know how Kira dealt with the issue that I found.
So, um, what I ended up doing is just putting in the intersection that she had indicated instead of being the north end of the street.
What we're referring to is in Falcon Ridge preliminary subdivision notes, um, probably minutes page three. The third paragraph that starts out, Commissioner Lance expressed concern about the north side of four hundred east. Well, four hundred east runs north and south, so there can't be a north side of it, so she was clearing that up.
Okay, yeah, I think that was, that was the, the very northwest, or northeast corner of the, the proposed development, which is along four hundred east is maybe.
Not a real big issue, just a more for clarification and understanding. Thank you.
Yep, that's why we do this.
We'd like a motion.
Are there any other concerns?
Nope.
Um, I would like to make a comment real quick.
Yeah.
Um, just more of a statement for everybody, um, it was brought to my attention that there might, um, be some confusion or even just misinterpretation of some of the comments that I made actually last time regarding that Falcon, I think it's the Falcon Ridge, uh, subdivision. Um, I, I left in the minutes. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, um, does this directly relate to the minutes or should we go ahead and do the approval first?
Well, yeah, I, I noticed it wasn't in the minutes, so it's not a big deal. I don't know if you want to approve it first or I can comment afterwards.
Yeah, why don't we go ahead and, um, if it doesn't directly impact the minutes, let's go ahead with the approval of those minutes.
Nope.
Um, okay, so yes, we do need a motion to approve those.
Are the minutes faulty in some, some direction, Cody?
Um, that was just a, a, a quick kind of side comment that I was going to clarify. It wasn't of any kind of substance and so, uh, I'm sure that's why why it was left on the side. It was more of a joke than I made. Um, and so maybe jokes aren't necessarily added to the minute.
Maybe it's better left like it is?
Yeah, I, I believe so.
Alright, that being the case, I'll make a motion that we approve these minutes.
Okay, we need a second. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Um, before we go ahead and vote, uh, Commissioner Jorgensen, you're, um, obviously you were here last time. Um, you don't, you could abstain from voting on the approval of the minutes if you would like to, but you don't have to. So, um, leave that up to you. You can certainly, uh, you know, take the word of your fellow commissioners and vote to approve it if you like.
I'll agree, but I guess somebody else can second. I don't know.
No, you, you can second, but we will do a vote to approve and so if you wanted to abstain from that vote, but that is not a suggestion, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll abstain. That's good. I can do that.
Alright, so let's go ahead and vote. Um, since we've got some who are remote and some are here, who are here, I'll just do a roll call vote.
Sharon Wood?
Yeah.
Did she second?
She did second.
Okay.
You did second, right?
I did, I thought it was okay.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Perfectly, find a second and vote if you want to, but just wanted to clarify that for Kira.
He put it much more succinctly than I did, so.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, so we have an abstention from Commissioner Jorgensen, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go ahead then and vote on approval, Commissioner Wood. I, Commissioner Adcock.
Aye.
Commissioner Jorgensen is abstaining. Commissioner Curtis?
Aye.
Commissioner Nixon?
Aye.
Okay, we have four votes in the affirmative. That was way more painful than it had to be and I apologize for that. Those minutes are approved, uh, with four votes, um, to approve and one abstention. Okay, any other business that we need to take care of?
I, Commissioner Curtis, I think wanted to say something.
Did you want to? Did you want to continue, Cody?
Uh, sure, yeah, so anyways, at at that last, uh, meeting, um, regarding that that subdivision, I made a a joking comment, um, that I would buy a couple lots from, uh, I think it's Mr. Olson that's, you know, doing that subdivision. Um, and told him I'd talk with him after, obviously I was joking, um, and I know most people on the commission and and the city know me and and know my sarcasm, but it was brought to my attention that there's probably, you know, people maybe watching or that maybe don't know me. So, just wanted to clarify that, I I apologize, you know, shouldn't have made a a kind of a sarcastic comment, uh, regarding that because it may, uh, bring the wrong impression, so apologize on that and just wanted, you know, make sure I clarified.
Okay, thank you for, uh, clarifying that. I mean, I think, like you said, those of us who know you, I think we, um, understood that you were just engaging with the applicant and, um, you know, kinda making light of the situation, but, um, certainly all of us, we need to be, uh, cognizant of the comments we made and how they might be interpreted. So, appreciate you clarifying that. Okay, any other business we need to take care of?
I have a list of things.
All right, let's get to it.
Okay, so I I just wanted to echo, uh, Chairman Wood and express appreciation appreciation to Michelle Sperry. Uh, we appreciated the several years of service that she's she served on the planning commission. So, uh, just wanted to to recognize her and and thank her for for what she's done. Uh, and then welcome our new planning commissioner, Sarah Jorgensen. I gotta tell you, I'm I'm already impressed, she she certainly could have voted on those minutes and and the fact that she read those is kudos to her. I'm I'm gonna give her kudos here in in a a second as well, uh, leading to the next thing is there has been some least recent state legislation that now, uh, doesn't just suggest, but actually requires and mandates that the planning commission, uh, do four hours of training annually. Um, in fact, it goes even one step further and before a planning commissioner can even, uh, sit, um, in a planning commission meeting and vote, they have to go through an hour of training. So, uh, appreciate Sarah Jorgensen, I I communicated that with her and and she, uh, she did everything she could to get that that training done and and she's she's done that. So she is, she is well-prepared and has been really doing a lot of, uh, things to to get herself ready to to be on the planning commission. So, we're we're excited to have her join us and and, uh, yeah, so with that said.
Welcome, Sarah, sorry.
So, w- with that said, um, she's gone through it and can can attest to what it's like. But, uh, I'll be sending the planning commission, uh, similar email that that links to this training. Uh, it counts towards an hour of training, uh, we're still gonna need throughout the year to to do, uh, three hours of other training. But, uh, this is a a good, it's it's titled Land Use One Oh One Powers and Duties. And it's it's, I actually took it myself, I wanted to to be in the trenches with you and and do do, uh, this training and 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 know kinda what what is there. And and I've even got my my certificate that that shows that I did the training. And so, this will be something that as you guys do the training, I'd appreciate it if you, uh, send me your certificates so that we can keep a record of that and and be able to to show if needed that that we've adequately done our training. So, um, at least an hour of it. So, that's something that you can look for from me in an email, um, and and that we can look at closer. So, hopefully that's beneficial to you and and I'm happy to to, uh, help out in any way that I can. It's a little tricky to get on there and navigate, but once you get through it, it's it's, I think it's, it was worthwhile and 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 helpful, so, um.
Would would the training that's required for open public meetings fall into this too?
Yep, I I that would that would qualify. There's a number of different things that qualify related to land use and whatnot. And so, um, and and this training is something that that could even be applied elsewhere. I've already talked to some staff and it might be good for them to 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 do as well, just so that we can can make sure that we're on the same page with how, uh, you know, local government works and and, um, and and, you know, polishing our our, uh, ourselves, if if you will. So, uh, the the next thing is, um, next Tuesday, and and I guess I should take a step back. On May fifth last week, uh, the the Utah State University s- s- uh, senior students in the the Landscape Architecture and Environmental Planning Department, they they gave their presentations, uh, related to envisioning Santaquin and they they covered a a bunch of different areas and and did a really good job. Uh, that's a video we're still looking to to get from, uh, the folks up at Utah State and that's something that we'll share with the public. But in conjunction with that, and that was all done via Zoom, but in conjunction with that, they, uh, they've suggested an offer to to come do an in-person presentation, kind of on along the same lines, not necessarily reiterating what they did, but kind of expounding on things and it'd be a couple professors and perhaps a couple students. They're planning to come down next Tuesday at the city council meeting during their work session. The work session starts at five thirty and so, um, that's something that we would invite, uh, planning commissioners and anybody else who who would like to to hear what, you know, they have to say. So, uh, we appreciate Utah State University and 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 this this group for for doing this project and and, uh, diving in deeper to, uh, what Santaquin is and and what, uh, things it it needs to be, um, you know, considerate of as as drop happens and as as we move into the future.
That's on the eighteenth?
Uh, correct, yep, at the the work meeting, so five thirty.
I've already got arrangements to be out of town then, sorry.
And that's fine, and and we.
I did view the Zoom meeting on the fifth.
Yep, I saw you there.
That was excellent, I got five pages of notes.
Yeah, there there's some great, great visioning ideas there that that, uh, we'll we'll certainly, uh, give to our general plan consultants and we'd we'd love to see some of those ideas considered and and put in scenarios and and, uh, and kinda weighed that way. But I should mention that that the the meeting next week is still gonna be, uh, on YouTube. So, um, it is something that people can can view and 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 be able to participate that way as well. So, uh, we encourage you to, and and if it's gonna be on YouTube, it'll be recorded and and can be watched after the fact. So, uh, some great things there and and we, again, appreciate the work they've done. Uh, the last thing that I have, um, just today, uh, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Steve Larson. If you remember him, he's the the proposed developer, uh, or the developer for the proposed Gray Cliffs development. I don't wanna speak for him, but he's he's doing a lot of reconsidering of 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 how his proposal will look. In a nutshell, he's he's looking to to go get away from from, um, higher density units, uh, apartments, townhomes, that sort of thing. He's looking to do larger, uh, lots, luxury home type product. But he still has the same vision, he still wants to to create a lot of recreational opportunities higher up on the hillside. Um, and in order to to continue working with the city and and trying to figure out the best plan for all that property, uh, he's he's invited, uh, the the city council and and the planning commissioners as well to to tour his property. And he would, uh, you know, make accommodations so that that you can get around on the property, get high up into the hills and really look at and and kind of, uh, envision what that property could be. Uh, he's particularly looking for input on on recreational amenities and what the city would like to see up there. Um, so, again, he's he's kind of going back to the drawing board and looking at a number of different things and and we'll look forward to kind of a revised proposal from him. But for the time being, he'd he'd like to to get you on the ground and and really see what his property is and and what potential is there. So, uh, he's arranged to to do a tour of his property this Friday evening. It's at six thirty that 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 tour would start. At this point, I'm just looking for a head count of of people that that would be able to go. That way I can communicate with him to to let him know so that he can, you know, be accommodating and and plan accordingly.
This is on east.
Sorry?
This is on east, like up against the.
Uh-huh, so that, so basically north of CS Lewis Academy, that land that's up on the the hill that was an old mining pit, gravel pit. So, the logistics for where we'll meet and stuff, I'll I'll communicate with that with you later in the week. Uh, but we'll we'll meet up there at six thirty, he only anticipates that it'll be a couple hours that that, um, you know, he'd like to do that. This is, this would likely be advertised as a public meeting, so, um, um, you know, others could attend if if they'd like to. But and then that's just because if if we have quorum from either the planning commissioner or city council, we'll wanna make sure that that it's it's noticed appropriately. So, um, I know this is, this is kind of a a big ask, but if if you could look at your your schedules and if you could get back to me, uh, sometime later tonight, that that would be best. That way I can let him know and that'll give him a couple days. He may get some, uh, you know, four-wheel drive vehicles or side-by-sides so that that you'll be able to to get access to proper, the parts of the property that are a little bit harder to get to. Um, so, again, let me know if you can make it and then further details and logistics for for, uh, where we'll meet and and how that will happen, we'll we'll come later. So, with that, that's the th- th- those are the only things I had and happy to answer any questions that you have about projects or other things that are happening in the community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
Um, what time did you say on Friday?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay, I'm gonna be out of town, but I might have someone come in my place.
Well, and and what I what I communicated with him is is obviously there's a lot of schedules and 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 people to try and accommodate. Uh, depending on the attendance, uh, it might be something that he'll he'll do a second, uh, tour, just cause so he can get more people. He's even talked about, and this is something he's done a a good job of, is really trying to get input from all different levels. So, you know, he's he's come and and given his his proposal, uh, at the the rec board meeting, I guess it's now the community services board. But, you know, he's looking for input input from all different levels, uh, within the city. So, um, I don't know for sure that'll happen, but but that that may be something that that happens based on on how many people are able to come and and what kind of, uh, you know, experience that that is for for them.
I'm glad you brought that up because I also will not be able to make it on Friday and I very much hate to miss that opportunity. So if there is the opportunity to do a second tour, please let us know.
And I can certainly relate as to him that there is interest, uh, that there's can, you know, conflicts with schedules that it might not work for some. But there is interest and and if if another, you know, opportunity to to look at the property can happen, then then that would be appreciated.
I'm kinda in the same situation and a little bit longer notice might help too.
Yep, again, this is something that that we've talked about and and trying to juggle schedules and and make it, find a time that works for everybody. That's that's totally understandable.
Hey Jason, I assume you said he's gonna be there two hours, like six thirty, eight thirty, it's not like the whole tour is that long, it's just that space of time. So if you show up a little bit later and you, you know, you run up for, you know, fifteen or thirty minutes, however long it takes, or you expect it to kind of be there the whole time?
Well, I think it'd be great if you're there, but he he's talked about maybe he can have, maybe he can be up higher where he wants to really point out some some, uh, unique features of the property. And he might have somebody that just kinda goes back and forth and shuttles people. So he he might be more on top, kinda pointing out some of the things, uh, the characteristics of the the hillsides and, you know, kind of what he's seeing in terms of this would be a great spot for a trailhead, this could be a great spot for, you know, a a bike trail, uh, dropping down from this point or things like that. So, uh, I think if you can make it in in any form, that that's something I think could work out. But again, I'll continue to communicate these things to him and 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 that way it it'll be feedback that that can help him plan accordingly.
Yeah, I I could probably make it over there, it just wouldn't be right at six thirty, maybe closer to seven and I I have my own side-by-side, I could just drive over and, um, and and go up and meet him if if needs be.
Okay, yeah, I'll I'll let you know more details. And really, I'll I'll let everybody know just in case, but, uh, but like I say, it's just, it'd be good to have a head count so that he knows kinda what to expect and he can accommodate as needed.
Anything new in the city you'd like to share?
Uh, a lot of things happening, as you see, the UDOT's been starting to to work on Main Street. Uh, there's gonna be more work that's done there, uh, all along Main Street out to to Alberta, all the way out there. So, they've kinda done the first pass and they're looking to do the rest of it in another pass in the coming weeks.
What is it they're doing?
They're just, they're milling the asphalt and then they're putting new asphalt down, so basically it's it's gonna be a new road.
I I know I saw that, you know, the road was supposed to be closed to Fifth, Sixth and Seventh and stay away from it, so I did. I even went to pacing the backroads.
Uh-huh, yeah, so that that's something that's that's happening, um, in. Yeah, we're we're continuing to work for, move forward and and work on the design of the new city hall. Uh, we're anticipating, uh, a groundbreaking first part of June, uh, so that'll be something to look for. I.
There's a phase two of the Harvest View.
Space complex. Phase two of what?
So the soccer fields down, uh, that's that's referred to as the Harvest View Sports Complex.
Okay.
There's a second phase that'll include eight pickleball courts, uh, playground, um, a snack shack concession stand slash bathroom facility, so. Lots, yep, and a huge parking lot.
Speaking of that, oh, it'll include the parking lot?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
So, in asphalt parking lot, lots of landscaping, lots of trees, so it's it's, uh, kind of the second phase to continue to approve that. Uh, I guess another thing that I should mention being the planning commission is, is the general plan mostly for the month of May, it's just getting surveys, uh, getting people to take surveys and and trying to to gather input from the community. So, we encourage you, if you haven't taken it already, to take that, uh, envision Santaquin dot com. You can you can find it there and 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 all the information related to. Yep, and and you'll receive a postcard in the mail, which which Brianna held up hers. So, uh, yeah, we just are looking for all the input that we can get and and, uh, and hopefully those po- postcards will will help people, uh, know how to take that survey and whatever we can do to help and and and, uh, and and facilitate people taking that survey, we're we're happy to to do in any way we can. So, um, another planning effort that's that's taking place, uh, that that is, it is gonna be on the planning commission agenda sooner than later. Perhaps the beginning of next month is the active transportation plan. Uh, we did a kickoff meeting with, uh, uh, Parametrics, they're a a transportation planning firm. Uh, they've they did our transportation master plan update. Uh, so they, we we had held a kickoff meeting with them, talked about kind of how this project will go. They're actually gonna be visiting, uh, Santaquin and and looking at points of interest and and different trails and 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 whatnot, uh, on Thursday. So, right now at this point, they're they're doing an assessment and 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 gathering data and and really trying to see what Santaquin has. And and from that that point on, then they'll they'll look to to work more with the planning commission and receive input that way. So, there's definitely a a, uh, a group out there of of interested residents that are are very much interested in trails. Uh, we invite them to to come to that, come to future planning commission meetings, that's that's where all the discussions related to that will be held. Uh, we do have a list of people that are interested, I know John Bradley has that and will communicate with those people. But anybody else that might be interested in this, have them look at at planning commission agendas and and, uh, like I say, that could be happening here soon to to start giving, uh, that, uh, consultant some input.
Excellent.
When is phase two for Harvest View? Sorry, can we do that, it's supposed to start?
So, we're we're trying to to kinda work out the the final, uh, details. Um, we're hoping that there'll be some work starting in the next couple months and really it it just depends on on how long the the construction year is. But it it likely is probably not gonna be done and ready until next spring. Um, but we're we're hoping to get ready and and start it on that that soon.
Awesome, is that phase three the the part like baseball parks, softball parks?
So, that's what's been envisioned, uh, there's no solid plans there, uh, we don't necessarily have a phase, but but that that is a a future, uh, phase that where where baseball fields, a a triplex has been talked about. So, uh, at this point, we're focused on phase two and and we have the the, uh, the funding to to be able to do that and so we're gonna take that.
It's a ninety percent design and we will be going up the bid fairly soon after the design is completed.
Has DOT talked to the city at all about Santaquin Canyon? Do we know anything about that?
So, that is is not necessarily DOT, it's more Utah County and and. And federal highways.
Okay, I I knew somebody bigger had taken it over, cause the county can't handle it.
And that's.
It's too big a project.
Yeah, and that and that's something that that our mayor and council brings brings up often. Um, and they're they're working, uh, with various different levels of of staff and staffing in in those entities and and even with with congressmen to try and 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 get that canyon, uh, opened back up and and get the the road fixed and and addressed.
Last night, Mayor Huntaker, Congressman, um, Burgess Owens, to try and put more pressure on getting that done. So, it is at the forefront of our.
It sure missed, of course.
Yeah, painfully so.
It's probably a a good time to mention, there there's a fence up there and and we found it open. People need to stay out of there, there's some really dangerous things that are beyond that fence. Uh, you'll see paint lines in the road, if if you you drive a car on that, you just might, you know, fall to your death. I mean, to put it bluntly, so it's it's a dangerous area up there with all the the activity that's happened up there, the erosion. Uh, the road is not safe to drive on, so we encourage people to to, you know, recognize there's a fence there and it's meant to to keep you safe. So, please do not, do not go in there.
Okay, looks like our time's. Okay, looks like our time's limited anyway. Anything else?
No, you can keep going. I have to end.
Okay, second lease on life. Anything else we need to take care of in the meeting?
Thanks, Jason.
Okay, I was like, maybe we're done. Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:13. So we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good night, Cody and Brianna.